Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Bowlin. Today, we have Bill McDonald from the Prothman Company here. He's going to go through the start of our recruitment process for the new city manager. I'm not going to get into much more than that. I'll let Bill kind of take it away, and maybe you guys want to introduce yourselves to him, so he is aware of who you guys are and all that good stuff. So, Bill, or actually, if we want to start over here with Wayne.
Rebecca Griswold, City Councilor, Ward 2.
Michelle Steinhebel, Councilor, Ward 3.
Jason Bowlin, Councilor, Ward 3.
Two.
Well, thank you very much for your hiring Prothman, your confidence. Appreciate that. Let me give you a little bit of my background, and then we can kind of talk about the questions I think you've already received that sort of probe what you're looking for.
Excuse me one second. This is Paul Aziz, Mayor. I'm on line two.
Oh, sorry, Paul. Forgot about you. Hello, Mayor.
That's all right.
We didn't see you there.
Absolutely not forgotten. Hello, Mayor. So, just a little bit of my background. It was probably in the proposal, but just so that you know, I'm longtime city manager over 30 years. More than that, local government. I've worked for six cities, two counties, and council governments. Two cities in Oregon and four in Washington. So, and I'm not really a nomad, but you move around in the city management profession. So, I was in, started my career in Milwaukee in Oregon and ended up moving into the city manager's office there as an assistant, and then was in Klascani for 10 years, and then moved up to Washington. Four cities up there. The last one was City of Pialp, which is east of Tacoma, if you know where Pialp is. So, I have experienced sitting in the chair as a city manager, and I can say that I love the profession. I love local government, and I'm obviously sort of semi-retired, but I really enjoy the recruitment business because I like to see good people get into local government. I think it's an extremely critical, important role. You're the closest to the people, and they really depend on you to do a good job. So, I'm committed to making sure that you have a really good group of candidates to select your next city manager. And been pretty successful doing that along the way, but part of that is making sure we have a good profile and that you let me know what you're looking for. So, the first question, do you have any questions of me? Maybe I'll stop and...
If you could maybe talk us through the, just talk us through the process today and give us some, a little bit of what to expect today.
Yes. So, I've got a list of questions. You should have gotten a copy of them. I'd like to pick your brain to find out, you know, what you're looking for, what's happening in Lebanon, that type of thing, what your major issues are. And just, you know, you all have different, might have different opinions, you might have the same opinion, but I want to make sure that I get everybody's perspective. I've already met with your management team and with Ron and with Angela and had an opportunity to talk with them. So, I'm real interested now to talk to you as elected officials, and you're the hiring body, and they're reporting directly to you, so I want to find out what is important to you. And that's it. We got, go through this, and what happens after this is we do a profile, and it'll talk about the city. It'll talk about the position, some issues that you have, and you'll have a chance to take a look at that, and we get that on our website and get that out to people that might be likely candidates. And you've got, I've got the calendar, you know, this, you're kind of geared to be making a hire decision, I think, in March or April, as I recall. So, that's the process, basically. The first question I would have is just the qualities you're looking for in a city manager. I've got, there's kind of two questions I ask, qualities and then skills, but what qualities are you looking for? And if you would like, I would, I did get a couple of responses that got emailed to me, and what I've already heard is highly ethical, empathic, logical, even tempered, someone that's willing to make a decision, effective communicator. What else?
Well, I'll speak up. So, for me, Lebanon is a really tight, small town, and I come from a city government that was a little bit larger, and so there were more, you know, a lot of different directors responsible for less work. And I've come to see that in Lebanon, we're the exact opposite. So, we have fewer directors, and they're responsible for more. I really would like someone who understands the small town and understands that they're going to have to actually, you know, boots on the ground, you know, a little bit more involvement than if you were from a larger city, and maybe not so once-removed, but like in there. And I get it that, you know, they direct their directors to do stuff, but it feels like, from my understanding from before, that having somebody that's a little bit more hands-on and all those qualities that you just read a minute ago as well, of course, but someone who just wants to be a team player and understands that they have to do more in a smaller town.
Okay. So, Oregon's not an easy place to manage. You know, you're kind of resource scarce, you know, money's always a big issue in Oregon. I made, kind of made the standing joke when I went to Washington, was that I was a revenue refugee, you know, after managing in Oregon for, in cities for 15 years. And it's, so you better be able to get things done on a shoestring. Anything else?
I think echoing all those qualities that you brought up, that we'd already previously told you, but also economic development. Lebanon has been on a very positive path in terms of economic development. We've had a lot of successes in the past, and I think it's really important to bring someone in that can continue that path for the future as well. But again, that's, the biggest things for me are the things you already lined out, which was, you know, effective communicator, someone that can build partnerships. Those are the most important qualities for me, but the economic development piece is essential as well.
Okay. So, when we talk about the city manager being involved in economic development, so they're a face of the city, they're a facilitator, but you're talking about the ability to reach out and represent the city well?
Absolutely, yes. We have some challenges, and we need someone that can, that can help us through those challenges and keep our economic development on track, basically.
Okay.
I think our connection to that is the ability to become a part of the community and understand the business and the situation within the community. Because if they don't have that ability to communicate with the citizens and with the businesses, they're not going to be effective in bringing the economic development there because they're not going to know what's going to be the right fit.
Okay. So, it's my understanding that you're in transition. You were, at one time, a natural resource-based economy, and now you're moving into more than that. You've got the hospital, for instance, and you've got, you've got other things where you're, you have a more diverse economy, and that's what you're, that's the direction you want to go, is building up other sectors of the economy, not just the natural resource.
For me, all those qualities are important. That individual needs to be able to sustain a chemistry that is recognizable within City Hall, the community, the county, and someone that has ability to reach out and make a difference in a broader circle rather than just the city manager's office.
Okay. So, you don't, they have permission to represent the city with outside stakeholders and to build relationships and connections with other cities, with the county, with, you know, regional partners, fire districts, whether special district. You want somebody that is doing that, not camping at City Hall?
Correct.
Okay.
Kind of along with that, leadership in, for the staff. I think connecting with staff, making sure that staff feel valued, and really setting a culture of, the culture of teamwork, which I heard, but that would personally care about, you know, boots on the ground, walk into your office, how's your mom doing?
Yes.
Eye contact.
Happy birthday.
Eye care. Whatever.
So, that's that empathic, you know, respects everybody.
Right. Not everybody's friend.
And shows it.
But.
So, for me, leadership is having a vision for the future and being able to articulate that. It's kind of that big-picture thing. Management is kind of taking care of the day-to-day operation.
Right.
And you want both.
Right.
But you, you know, you definitely want somebody that knows what the big picture is and can describe it.
Leadership is paramount, so I, as a staff person, will bend over backwards for somebody that is a good leader. I will, I will, I make you look good, you make me look good. We care about this organization, we care about it together, we care about each other. But if I don't feel valued, then I'm not going to bend over backwards for you. I'll come in, collect my paycheck, do what I got to do.
So, that's, that's that soft skills thing, you know? You've got to show people you really do care, you know, and so you're saying that's real important.
Yes. They must have a track record of people that cared passionately about their leadership style.
Okay.
I'd like to see someone that has been through the fire too, because this boat's not always going to float smoothly. And someone with some experience dealing with crisis and the ability to work through it in a collaborative way.
Okay. So, somebody that's been battle-tested, so to speak, you know, whatever that, whatever that may be. So, you want a manager that will establish accountability, you know, and performance in the organization and can make a tough decision.
I have a couple. Can you hear me?
Yes.
One of those is, I really would like to see someone also, along with all the other qualities everybody's mentioned, is someone who's passionate and someone who's engaged in the community as far as all the local activities and being involved in service clubs and groups like that. I think those are really important. And another one is for the person to be calm in stressful situations and not reactionary.
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm looking for a word. That's sort of a wisdom and maturity-type thing, you know, that's somebody that can handle stress under fire, you know, and I'm, is there a better word? Somebody that's kind of got a mature demeanor and is unflappable?
Yeah, in that realm, exactly.
Okay. All right. I'll find some synonyms that work.
Okay.
Anything else under qualities? Think about that one. I'd like to talk about the experience level. You know, I said, do you want a rising star? Do you want somebody with a lot of experience? So, here's the, here's the, what you're likely to get. You'll get city managers that'll apply. You know, this is an attractive community, and you'll have people that want to make a lateral move or people that might want to step up. You'll have department heads that might want to step up. You may have some people from county government, from special districts. You could have people from the private sector and from professions. How important is it to you that they have prior city manager experience?
I think that's, to me, I think it's not necessarily important that it's city manager experience, but it's some sort of significant leadership experience in an organization, whether that's as a director or, you know, an assistant city manager. I don't think having to have sat in the chair is a...
The end-all.
Yeah, is a true qualifier for me.
Okay.
But on the other hand, I kind of feel like we are in a position where we need someone to come in that can provide some instant stability and some instant control of our organization, and I don't know that the young up-and-comer would maybe be the best fit for us right now.
Just, so, city business is a complex business. You got, you're running a lot of, multiple businesses, so somebody that has, understands that, maybe been a department head, might fit in. Obviously, somebody that's been a city manager, if they've got a good track record.
No one that is more than, you know, we're not looking to two steps up. Someone that's not able to understand that. A lateral move or someone with one level down would be a better fit.
So, the International City Manager Association has a credential manager program, and that's becoming another credential. MPA is another one that is typical from the education side. Do you care much about that? Some communities say, oh, we really think they ought to have an MPA, and they ought to be a credentialed manager. What I'm, kind of think I'm hearing is you want somebody that's got demonstrated ability to sit in the chief executive chair. And has some knowledge, understands local government, maybe understands cities, but the credential's not as important. Probably want to have at least a bachelor's and MPA might be good, or a master's. The other credentials are okay, but that's not going to drive it. Soft skills are real important. You know, I hear communications coming through, you know, somebody that knows how to talk to people in the organization, to elected officials, and to the public, you know.
His degree doesn't make the man or the woman.
That's for sure. That's for sure. All right. So, you're, you know, the funnel can be fairly wide. You know, like I said, you may get some really good people from the nonprofit organizations or people that have been in special districts that have really good skills, have worked with boards, you know, and get that. I think cities are kind of unique, you know, because the microscope's on cities more than it is special districts, but, and more than it is at counties, for sure. I didn't mention, when I was in, one county, I was in Columbia County, I was a county commissioner for a couple of years, so I kind of got the perspective of the difference between a city and county and how much scrutiny they have. Anything else on, in terms of good fit for Lebanon? I think what I'm hearing is, you know, the soft skills thing and reasonable experience, but you're pretty flexible. I, you know, my personal desire, when I'm screening candidates, is to make sure they have those soft skills, but they technically know the business, you know. And so, you know, you can get, you can know the business working at the department level. I mean, that's kind of how I got into this. I was sort of the accidental city manager along the way, but started out at the department head. So, the next question is about what's, this is just, think of this in terms of selling Lebanon to somebody that's outside the community. What's special about Lebanon that you're proud about and that you want somebody to know about and that you think is an attraction for somebody to come to this community?
I think our city that friendliness built is very, very genuine in Lebanon. I think it's a, it's an extremely down-home, small-town feel for sort of a mid-sized city. I think in Oregon, are we considered mid-sized in Oregon?
You're about eighteen, or seventeen thousand now.
Yeah, about.
Yeah. You know, you're not a small city anymore.
The League of Oregon Cities calls us a larger city.
Yeah.
Believe them or not.
You're not a, you're not a, you're not a small city anymore.
Well, our intention is to maintain a smaller city culture.
Right.
And so, I think that we definitely have a friendly culture and very welcoming to outsiders.
Okay. So, this is a community where you still, people know each other, and you see each other at church, you see each other at the store, and you got the service clubs, I imagine you got a number of them, and people are engaged there, and you want somebody that's going to, that has a track record of joining in and...
At least slightly outgoing and welcoming when, you know, if we're all in a room and three new people come, this person should be one of the first to say, hey, I'm Karen, I'm the city manager.
So, you don't want an extreme introvert?
Correct.
Right. Yeah. Okay. So, somebody that's congenial, can cultivate relationships easily, and is, has some political moxie, kind of knows how to do that, you know, in a way that's...
But if somebody came to town that was, if we hired somebody who was very uppity and pretentious, that is not going to fly very well.
Right.
In this environment.
So, it's safe to say, big ego is not very, very effective in a city manager role.
No.
Not in Lebanon.
A little humility, never heard.
Right.
Anything else about Lebanon that you would want to sell as a, you know, you're a, you're a, you're a community that still has a small-town feel, you're still personal, you know, you have a personal feel? Anything else?
I have something. As we had the vision, our vision plan two, three years ago, the community said that they wanted the small-town feel, that they still wanted managed growth, and that, and then the fact that the downtown, they wanted the downtown to be the center of the community. So, those are a couple of important things, I think, that we have out there also.
All right. We'll talk about those again when I talk about issues and concern, but you want to preserve the downtown, you want, that's the city center, you want that to thrive, and the managed, is, now, you're not growing at a frightening pace, you are growing though.
Yeah.
You know, you were like sixteen thousand eight hundred in 2017, and you're, what are you, close to eighteen now?
Seventeen and change, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, you're, so you're growing. So, growth isn't so torrid that it's become a hot political issue.
Right.
But you do want to maintain a reasonable level of growth, and you've got, you've got room to grow? I mean, your open growth boundary is reasonable, and you've got...
Well, we have some, we have some infrastructure issues that growth, you know, has some limitations on, but we're addressing that.
Okay. So, some of the areas you could grow into, you'd have to, you'd have to extend infrastructure into them?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
One thing I wanted to mention, when I first moved here, that I noticed, I was from just a little bit bigger city and was also in city government, and when I came here, it was just amazing to see the support. Lebanon isn't ultra-rich, you know, we're not Portland, we're not Eugene, but they support the services that we have here.
Okay.
I mean, granted, people are not happy with their water, but the water bill, I get that, but public safety, schools, so for not, for folks not having a ton of money, just being good, blue-collar people, down-to-earth, they see and have foresight to realize that we need to have a good structure for schools, public safety, both police and fire, and I've seen that supported all the way around, and it just always amazed me.
That's good.
Where I've seen it not that way, and other things that are more superfluous seem to be more important than just the core skill or the core skills. The core of how to, you know, the needs versus wants. And our community, I feel, gets what the needs are and feels like, okay, that's what we need to do, and then as we can grow a little bit, let's get some wants, is what I feel.
I think Lebanon's a city of opportunity for someone coming here as a potential leader. This is a city that values involvement of its citizens. This is a city that values effort and outside-the-box thinking in terms of how to provide new services, how to meet the needs of the community, and even exceed those needs in some places. So, I think for someone, if you're talking about marketing Lebanon to a potential candidate, I think that the opportunity to be a dynamic leader in a, in a city that is growing and that is yearning to grow even more, that's a great opportunity for either an established leader or a newer leader to be a part of that. So, this is going to be a place where they come and they realize that, hey, I see the same people in all the same committees, all working towards a common, you know, you're going to see the same people at a Boys and Girls Club fundraiser that you're going to see cleaning up the parks the next day because it's the whole 90-10 rule, right? But those, that 10% of people are passionate about what they do for our community, and they're going to want a city manager who's going to support them in whatever way he or she can.
Okay.
So, great opportunity for someone to...
Lot of potential.
Yeah.
Lot of untapped potential.
Yes.
And a lot of working potential.
I think since the timber industry went away, the diversity, the diversity that we've been able to accomplish is something that the citizens want to see continue at a rate that is satisfactory.
Okay.
And we are, sorry, we're financially stable. I think if you're going to sell us to the right candidate, I think we're...
We're stable. I mean, we're not, we're not looking at losing positions like neighboring cities are.
Right. You're not stepping into, oh, my gosh, yeah, we've got financial turmoil. That's a big stressor, I would think, on a manager.
That is. That is. I mean, some cities have gotten in the habit of operating on crisis mode, you know, and not taking care of business along the way, so that they wait until things are a mess, you know, and that's not a good way to manage, so...
No. And this person will inherit a really, close your ears, a really good team of managers.
Right.
So, I just didn't want you to hear that.
[laughing]
So, yeah, stable, financially stable, you know, with subsequent leadership.
But they will have some challenges. This is not going to be a step in and just win-win-win. There are going to be some challenges, for sure, but I think they're going to be stepping into a much more tenable situation than your average city across Oregon, probably, that's facing dire financial issues or FTE cuts or things of that nature, so...
Right.
There's time, there's time to learn and time to grow and not have to put out a fire on day one.
Yeah. Right. So, and I'm not hearing that there are any huge, I mean, every city has, you know, some issues, but I don't hear that there are any raging fires that...
We're down to five lawsuits.
Yeah.
Really settling down.
Well, I'll tell you what.
Just kidding.
See, that's part of the litmus test, you know, for a city manager. If you, if you, if you don't know what it's like to be sued, you know, then your experience hasn't been well-rounded, I guess.
Whoever, whoever we get to be our city manager is going to be well-pleased with what he or she's coming into.
Okay. Good. So, the council, from what I hear, and just kind of talking to you, seems to be a pretty congenial group. They get along well, respect each other. The staff feels like you're very supportive to them, and that's the culture you want to cultivate. In terms of organizational, just organizational development, anything that you think would be important for the new city manager to have in their toolkit in terms of maybe organizational development? And I'm not talking about coming in and being a change agent that's, you know, that's got a, you know, a bag of tricks I'm talking about, just in terms of something that will fit and that will be a help to the culture and to the... and that will be a help to the culture and to the organization.
Yeah, we don't need a fixer here, you know, but, but, uh, I think we have a nice mix of, of staff right now and we have a nice mix of directors where you've got some really well-established directors and then you've got some directors who are newer to their position or, uh, or less tenured in their position, position, so to have a, a city manager who has mentorship capability and the ability to, uh, help to continue to develop their staff and is not a, you know, I've known a lot of leaders out there who are opposed to continuing education or opposed to employee development, uh, I, I wanna see a leader who's encouraging of developing their employees and trying to get the, the guy below him to not only understand the city manager's job, but then, you know, council's job as well, so I want somebody who's gonna mentor and who's gonna bring people through.
So, I mean, that, that gets into the subject of succession too, I mean, you've got some people that have been around for a while, you know, that have a lot of institutional knowledge and if you don't have a culture that, that, uh, supports training, development and, 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 uh, moving up in the organization, you know, then that, that's a disadvantage.
Succession planning is something that we've verbalized for many years, but essentially we don't have, have it in place to any degree.
So that, that might be something that, that, I mean, I talked a little bit with Angela about that and she said that's something that, you know, probably we need to do more there.
I'd like to see this individual use the skillsets that are available to he or she from the League of Oregon Cities Council of Governments, the state of Oregon has a number of departments that I'm not sure that we've used to the degree that would help us in terms of diversifying econo- economic development.
Okay.
Now, wetlands issue is, is a major issue for us.
The what now?
Wetlands.
Oh, okay.
And be, be able to work with the county and the state of Oregon with resolving some of those issues.
DQ, it's DQ, isn't it, the, or the Department of Health?
Department of State Lands.
State Lands.
State Lands, okay, all right.
Some knowledge of that would be very helpful.
All right, so somebody, somebody that had some already established relationships with, having, was an Oregon manager, then it has those kind of relationships, that would be a plus. Um, in terms of what's working well in the organization, what I hear is you have, you trust your management team, you think the city's basically pretty well-managed, you're in a good spot, uh, anything that you, that you can think of that you'd like to improve just because you think it would be good for, for everybody, maybe, uh, I don't know if it's process stuff, you, um, you don't, you have maybe one, possibly two council meetings a month, you get your business done, um, anything there that, uh, somebody coming in might be able to, to help?
No, I, I, we have an excellent permitting department with planning and I'd like to see that individual maintain that, we have a reputation in the general area and in the state of being a community or a city that, uh, rapidly handles requests from developers that come in the door.
So that's a customer service, uh, mentality, you know, where you're-
And we've maintained that for some time and certainly wanna see that continued.
All right, so, nothing broken in terms of process, council gets packets, you got good, good, uh, staff reports, you get good presentations, uh, they help you make good decisions, uh, so there's noth- nothing, nothing there particularly, every city manager will come in and they'll have something that, you know, that, that they've, they've, the way they do things, you know, and that they, they might wanna to bring to the organization, but you don't see anything that's broken. Okay, good, all right. Um, so in terms of strengths for the city manager, what, what I'm hearing are, just parroting back, paraphrasing, leadership is really important, somebody that really is a natural leader, somebody that's a good communicator, I, in terms of skill set, a good manager, you know, understands the business of a city, um, you don't necessarily need somebody that, um, is an expert in finance or an expert in economic development, or do ya? Is there a skill set you, that you would prefer?
At least somebody that can read a budget, financials.
So, Oregon budget is not easy, it's a more complicated process than, uh, than other states, for sure, and you have great opportunity to stub your toe in the Oregon process, so somebody that understands Oregon budget wouldn't be a bad thing.
I think for me, if I had to pick one area for them to be a, kind of a pro at, I think the economic development would be that area, um, it's great if they have, you know, good experience with police or fire, public utilities or public works, uh, but to, i- if he had to be an expert at one thing, I would like him to, him or her to be an ex- expert at, at economic development and continuing to move the city in a positive direction.
So if you had a city manager that said, "I've had, uh, the experience of, of helping from, from start to ribbon-cutting, uh, bringing some big-box stores or some major employers into the community, I, we've done it from, um, you know, extending utilities to, you know, uh, holding their hands through permitting and, and I've got this experience in a multiple", that would be a big plus.
For me, yes.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, okay.
Or even somebody that was on-
I agree.
-on that manager's team, so, uh, like we said, maybe wasn't the city manager during that process, but, uh, but followed somebody through and mentored and, and, and came through that process and could step into that with experience.
Okay, because, you know, the, you, you, you know, you could get somebody out of the development community, uh, um, al- al- along the, the way when I was a candidate for city manager's job, I, you know, ran, uh, up against a fellow that had been a, had been in the development community, then he went into finance in the city and then ended up in city manager job, so he, he had a lot of experience with the development side, so, so that means, you know, the funnel needs to be fairly broad, but you really would like to have somebody that has some, maybe some expertise in that area. All right. Um, in terms of staff, I mean, I've, I've, I've talked to your department heads, you've got longevity, you, you've got from some, you don't have a lot of turnover, you know, you don't have a lot of people leaving the organization, um, and you have confidence in them, so, uh, it doesn't appear that, that there's a whole lot of, a lot of issues there, but, um, let me just ask in terms of the manager's side of it, the accountability and performance, uh, management side of it, um, you're looking for somebody that's able to come in and hold people accountable, that's not afraid to do that and isn't afraid to make the tough decision if somebody's not performing.
Sure.
Yes, and they, and that is, those department heads or individuals that he's supervising, he or she, they need to have reviews, you know, about their job performance so that they know where they stand, uh-
That's one of the questions I ask, is, is anybody get a, is, do people get regular performance reviews, you know, and if the answer is no-
I couldn't really tell you.
Hasn't happened, you know, it doesn't happen, then you don't really have, you know, you don't really have accountability.
One thing that's important to me, since you're on the, the subject though, is that I think it's important for a, a city manager to, to do those annual reviews or, or the periodic reviews of his staff or his staffers, but I would like to see a manager who is also open to have the, the magnifying glass turned on themselves, because as a council, to me, it's important to know what the department directors think of the city manager who's managing them and to get that opinion from them in some sort of a formal review process.
Okay.
So-
Yes.
I agree, three sixty evaluations are really important for her.
So, so, um, typically when you, you have a con- did, I, did you have a contract with your, with your city manager, have you been through a con- you, you have, an employment contract, do you have an evaluation provision in the con- contract typically?
Yes.
You do, so, a three sixty evaluation is, that's a, that's really important and I used to have to beg councils to actually do an evaluation, they didn't wanna do it, but you're saying, "We wanna do it."
I think that's gonna be-
Absolutely.
It's gonna be a requirement of their contract.
Right, okay.
That's, that's gonna be a deal-breaker for me.
Well, that, I think you're, you're wise, you know, that's, I think you need to do that, yeah, I, I always felt that, you know, even at the, the department level, that you need to give people feedback, you know, it can't just be a good job, I mean, you, something that's really tangible, so they'll know how they're doing, and the city manager is a really important job, you, you don't wanna, you don't wanna surprise them, you want them to let them know how they're doing and if there's room for improvement, you know, help them.
You know, that city manager needs to have goals for his department heads in terms of how you measure performance, uh, as we will have with the city manager.
So, so, do you think that the city is goal-driven, do you counsel establish, do you have tangible goals, measurable goals you establish for, for the city?
So about five years ago, we went through the twenty forty visioning process and we, as a community, and then also as couns- well, previous, before I was on council, but as council, they went through and identified these goals where we want the city to be, um, by twenty forty, whoever this candidate is really needs to be familiar with that, uh, that breadth of information, um, coming in, just because it, it's not just council's goals, while we are, our goals are important too, they're the entire community's goals.
So, so does that document drive your budget?
Yes.
Yes.
It does.
They're justifications, yeah.
It's a strategic plan.
It's your strategic plan, so, so you really do use, well, good for you, I mean, that's, to me, that's, that's a big positive thing, um, there's a lot of lip service to strategic planning and long-range goals, but if, if you include it in your budget and it drives your budget, good for you. Um, what, what do you see are maybe th- three to five challenges or opportunities? Um, let me give you some things that I've heard, uh, one of them, uh, Ron mentioned is, you know, you have some sort of asset management issues with, in utilities, you've got some issues with sewage treatment plant solids there, that, that's, that's an issue, that's not a, you're not in a compliance order or anything like that, but it, that, that's an issue, so somebody coming in has to understand that utility side, you've got some, uh, asset replacement probably on the, on both water and sewer, you know, you got, still got INI issue, um, where you've got stormwater going into sewer pipe and that has an impact on your plant.
Right.
Um, you got good water source, got, I assume you got good storage, no issues there, uh, your plant is functioning, so that's, that's good, you got issues with traffic and roads and, and maintaining those, um-
City Hall.
Please.
New Zoo City Hall.
What, yeah, well, City Hall is, yeah, that did come up, that City Hall, City Hall is, got its issues, so, you, so you have the, you have the potential for some capital projects, uh, both on the utility side and maybe on the, on the facility side?
Yes.
Okay, um, economic development, of course, is the other one, you wanna, you wanna be moving to a more and more diverse, um, economy, uh, from what I hear, the major employers are probably the hospital, maybe the schools, a couple big, big-box stores, um, I don't know, agriculture is still strong in, in the Lebanon area, uh, logging is not as much?
And we've gotta solve the wetland issue in order for economic development to really take off.
Okay.
Lebanon is home to one of the own, the one of two medical schools in the state.
I heard that, that, uh, that's pretty cool.
And that's, and the medical school is gonna be another-
For one.
Another driver of our economic development, really.
Yeah.
As they grow, Lebanon will grow.
That's an important partnership for, for the city manager to maintain.
Um, do, do, do you have a habit of meeting, um, with the major stakeholders in the community on, on a regular basis, maybe as a, in a, some kind of a collaborative, either at the city manager level or, or with the council?
I don't think it's a negative.
We could benefit from it.
I know our economic development coordinator's been, been doing some of that with some stakeholders and I think that's a good opportunity for the city manager to come alongside that person and help with those meetings, um, but I don't know that the city manager's done that in particular in the past, and someone correct me if I'm wrong.
That might be an area to cultivate, is, you know, I mean, you've got, you do have important relationships like that, that you wanna, you wanna nurture. Anything else in terms of, of issues or chall- opportunities, um, that we haven't mentioned? And I'm not wanting to beat this to death, but I like to represent you well.
I think you can always address public safety, eh, you know, we still have a lot of, we, you know, like with many places in, in Oregon, we still have a, a drug problem, we still have a petty crime problem, we still have a, a staffing issue at our, in our police force that it's, that we're likely understaffed for the population and the call volume we serve, so I, I think that's something that's gonna need to be addressed in the next zero to five years, for sure, and so I'd like to see a city manager that is proactively pursuing public safety opportunities in addition to the rest of the city, understanding it's just one department, but it's important to the community that they have a safe place to, to live and that their property is safe in the city.
Recruiting police officers is a, as you well know, is a difficult, difficult proposition these days, uh, I, do you, do you experience, uh, um, having, um, larger entities like, you know, counties or bigger cities, uh, poaching your, your police officers?
We've been poaching the county lately, so it's kinda come the other way around.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's happened, yeah, it happens.
Yeah, I, when I, when we, when I was at Milwaukee, the, we, we were a training ground for, uh, the Portland Police Bureau, we felt, um, and it's, nothing's changed there.
We need help in our issues around homelessness.
Oh, really?
We have a need to bring together the group, the coalition, we have the partners there, but there's not a functional network to make that viable and sustainable process. We're a little lack on leadership right now, we're in a transition mode, we had a study and we need to carry forward and implement those strategies.
Okay.
And we need a city manager that can lead and develop that partnership.
Are the churches pretty, are they involved at all in the homeless issue in, in town? Are they?
So, we identified some partners, um, the, the city has kinda taken the stance that, um, we, we don't have the resources to lead this, we're, we're happy to support it where we can, when we can, but the city does not wanna take the torch and carry it forward on its own, they're looking to these other organizations to pick that up, it was my understanding that we had some leads of others who were gonna do that, I haven't heard an update on that yet, though, but I think it's, I think to Bob's point, it's something that the city manager should be aware of-
Right.
-that this, this coalition exists, this group of, of, uh, service organizations and churches and, and service providers exists out there and the city, when they can, will help to facilitate that.
So do you have the tent city issue here and the transient population, so, I mean, that, uh, that, that's a big issue, I mean, I, I was city manager in Puyallup up in, in, uh, in, in Washington, which is a city of about forty thousand, and there was a big, big issue up there, and the churches were involved heavily in it and, and, you know, the big issue there was the opioid, uh, crisis and substance abuse, uh, was, you know, driving a lot of this, a lot of this homelessness, so it took, you know, it took a lot of people working together to try to get a handle on it and they still haven't got a handle on it.
We're not there, but I don't, I don't think we're honestly far from that popping up soon, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Not to be pessimistic about it, but-
Okay, so somebody that can be proactive and, and maybe think about, hey, this, this is, this is something we're gonna have to have a, have some solutions.
I agree that it's something this, the manager needs to be aware of, I'm not sure that, that we are, as a council, have decided that that person needs to take the lead on solving that for the city, because I think, but, but I think you're right, stay connected with the main players who are best suited, uh, to, to kinda keep, keep an eye on that situation and, and-
Okay.
Decide what's appropriate.
There was a homeless committee established shortly after we did the twenty forty vision, it has not had the leadership, although the, the city helped with- has not had the leadership, although the, the city helped with some of the leadership. But the chief of police feels, he had a staff person that was kinda the chairperson. That has not been successful in terms of working with the homeless. When they see an officer or whatever coming for them, towards them, they're, right away, they're not responsive. So, it's gonna take some effort from our city manager and we as a council to work with the other entities within the city to make some progress.
Okay, so this is a big issue everywhere. So, somebody that has some really good experience working with the homeless issue and, and working collaboratively with, with other partners in the community would be a plus. That's what I'm hearing. Not, not, it's not a, a big huge issue, but it, you know it's there and you'd like to.
You know, the last update that I believe the chief, who sits here beside me, and I'll ask him once in a while, how many homeless we have? It was only 25 or 30.
Okay. All right.
I don't know if that's a big amount for a city of our size or it's not, but it's still an issue.
Yeah, I mean, it's still, it's still an issue. It's, it's staggering to, to, I mean, you drive through Portland or drive through Seattle and, and there's homeless camps everywhere, you know? And it, it's, it's kind of, it's startling to, to, to see it. And those, those folks, and they're all human beings, you know? And they all have a story. Anything else? Challenges? I, I think I've got, got the flavor, but I don't wanna, anybody have any last idea there? I'll move on. Not... Okay, so, a couple more questions. The, the new person coming in, what do you think, you know, typically when a city manager comes in, you know, I always think it's a good idea to listen a lot and talk a little, you know? But what, what do you see as important, maybe out of the gate, that this person needs to do to kinda make, to get off to a good start?
Be a good question.
Okay, so I was right.
We'll be moving right into the budget side as soon as they arrive. If we, if we hire in the March, April timeframe. So, somebody that's will, can hit the road running on the budget is crucial.
All right, so that's true. You're, you're looking at a hire maybe March, April, and there, your budget, you gotta put that to bed by the end of June, right?
I think we kind of said this person wouldn't really necessarily be a part of this budget cycle, just kind of sit in on. So, we're not expecting them to come in March or April, create the budget for the May meetings.
Actually, they're probably not gonna be here until May or June.
Right.
So.
That was what we raised.
So, they're, they're really not gonna be able to.
I think we timed it that way.
I think Ron's, unfortunately, Ron's gonna have to be the.
Yes.
I would like, I would like to see this person, when they hit the ground running, with making relationships throughout the entire city staff. That, to me, is one of the top things, I think, that should happen in the first 90 days.
I second that.
I agree.
Yes. So, somebody that comes, somebody that says, hey, you know, my style is I wanna talk to everybody in the organization and I wanna know them. And I, I wanna know what they're doing.
Yes.
And, and what, what suc-, you know, what success is for them or what, that would be, that'd be a positive. And invest themselves heavily in the organization.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And then the community.
We need to cultivate those relationships pretty much out of the gate.
Okay.
Spend a day with your parks guys and see everything they're getting done and how far they're stretched and what, what they're working on. And, and, yeah, I would, I would love to see that.
Yeah, you, you get a, you get a sense of how much, how much staff resource you have. And you got too many priorities. You know, I used to say to councils, what don't you wanna have get done? You only have so much, only have so much manpower, you know? And can't, you can't do everything. So, you gotta know what your priorities are.
That individual, if they spend some time in those departments, they will soon have a feel for that.
For sure. Sure. Okay, good. Anything else? Any question I didn't ask, I should've asked that you wanna answer?
Do you happen to know John Nelson? He used to be a city manager.
Say again?
Do you happen to recognize the name John Nelson? He was city manager for Corvallis.
John Nelson?
Corvallis.
Nelson, city manager for Corvallis.
He was an interim manager here. What was his first name?
John.
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 Nelson.
Nelson.
Doesn't ring a bell.
Okay.
John Nelson.
He kind of, you know, capsulat-
You could clone him.
If I could, you could clone him. He's a great, great guy. He's since retired.
Had a good, had a good stuff.
But I was just hoping you might know him in your circles, but he's.
Yeah, I, yeah, I've been in, in Washington for 20 years. So, so I'm, I'm starting to lose connection with the, the Oregon, the folks.
Bill, I have a question for you.
I'll have to look that one up.
In, in our efforts of hiring previous city managers, it always comes up about how important is it that our city manager have Oregon experience? In terms of knowing the Oregon state laws, the, those kind of things versus coming in from Pennsylvania or Texas and not knowing anything about it.
Yeah. So, so I would, I would say that, that a city manager that understands local government generally, you know, is gonna, is gonna be okay. There are some things about Oregon that are unique. The budget, budget and finance is kind of unique in Oregon, you know? And particularly the, the budget process. So, I don't think it hurts to have some Oregon experience, but I don't think it's a deal breaker if they don't have it. I. Was that, was there a question, Mayor?
Yes, I did, I had one. One of the things in the past that we talked about in the previous hirings was the area that we live in. And, you know, bringing in somebody from Arizona or Florida coming to Oregon with our culture and our, you know, the weather patterns that we have and things like that. That, I think, is a small thing, but I think it's an important thing that, that's brought out to make sure that the person will be comfortable in this kind of an area. And we're not necessarily focusing only on people from Oregon or the Pacific Northwest. But it seems like the Pacific Northwest seems to be our better picking grounds.
Right. So, most of your applicants will be in the, in the, on the West Coast, probably a, a lot from Oregon and, and Washington. But you will get some from around the country. You know, I think you make a good point. You know, I, I had the experience one time of, of being, coming in number two, you know, being the maid of honor for a city manager job. But the fellow that they were gonna offer the job to forgot to consult with his wife about moving from Wisconsin to, 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 to Washington where it, where it rains a lot. And she threw the veto card, card down. So, so I ended up being the city manager. So, the, so the moral of that story is, there is a part, another partnership in the city manager business, which is the, the family. And you, you gotta know what you're getting yourself into. Yeah. And it does rain here.
How about Wisconsin?
Did it ever rain yesterday, I might add. Yeah, Wisconsin from Wiscon- you, you would think that anybody would wanna flee from Wisconsin.
Right.
Yeah, no. Now, she was probably a Packer fan, so I don't know.
Oh, that's a good reason.
Yeah, well, I was always a Packer fan and before I became a Seahawk fan. And then, any other questions, folks? Anything that you would like to add? Let me.
I do. What is the, what does the market look like right now? What does the pool look like of, when you're going out and you're doing these processes? I assume you have other irons in the fire right now. So, what's the climate?
It's never been tighter. It's never been tighter for everything, you know? The, I think there's a little more mobility in the, than the city manager profession than maybe some of the other, like even the department level professions. But it's still, it's, it's pretty tight. So, just to give you, you know, we do, we do a, I think, a really good job of focusing on our, the advertising and to the real, the ones that would really be viable candidates, not the whole world. But even with that, if you get 20 to 30 applicants, you know, and I'll, I'll, I'll go through and I'll, I'll, I'll interview the best of those and, and then I'll make some recommendations to you. If you get that kind of a response and their quality, I think that'll, that'll be successful. And you'll, I don't have any doubt that this will be a coveted position and that you'll get some, some good applicants. But it's a tight job market. Some professions are, I am, finance directors are murder. Engineering is, is crazy. Yeah, well, I don't want, I, I didn't, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said that in front of Ron. It's, it's almost write your own ticket in some, some of those professions. I think city, city manager, it's a very, you know, that's a pretty small universe. City, you know, people that have actually been city managers. So, it's a pretty small universe.
Are you aware of any other municipalities that are currently in processes or?
A lot of them.
Although, uh, well, there are, there are, there are in, in, in Washington. And I'm not, I, I, I don't know specifically in Oregon, but I can assure you that there are, you know, cities that are, that are looking. But that's okay. That, that's fine. You know, you, you know, you'll get people that, that, that will apply, that they could, you know, they're close enough that it's not a big, a big move. So, you know, you'll be all right, I think. But don't expect 100, don't expect, expect 100 candidates. Back in the day when I was applying a lot of years ago for city manager jobs, you get 50 or 60 applications for city manager. Not anymore. I mean, literally. I mean, I, I went up against 75 once, you know? Got the job. But I think that was the one where I was the maid of honor and I ended up with the job. That's all right. All right. Anything else, folks? I appreciate you taking the time. You've got my card. If you think of something and you, send me an email or, or call me at the cell number. You know, I'm an old city manager, so I'm used to being available 24/7. So, whatever. But you can send me an email. I'll respond. I'll let you know I got it. And what happens next is that we'll be working with some, some folks in our office to build that profile. And then you'll have a chance to take a look at that and, and buy off on that and say, "This, okay, we're ready to go." Then we'll get that thing going and, and the ads and all and, and get with it.
We, we look to do that on the 12th of February. So, I assume that's, I think that's in your schedule.
Yeah, I've got, I've got the, current schedule says you're gonna, the council's gonna endorse the profile on the 12th.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll post it on the 17th of February.
Okay.
It'll close on the March 22nd. We're looking for a work session in, in late March or early April. And so, it looks like this person could be starting right around probably July, June, June or July. Yeah, let me see. Could be sooner than that. April, May, May, June, July, something like that. All right? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil.
Anything else?
Freezing.
Uh, then we're adjourned.